Say, uh, this item is the continuation of the review of the two thousand ten, twenty, twenty ten, twenty eleven city manager recommended budget for the city of San Bruno and also for the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency. We started this process back on June first and second with study sessions and staff took comments from city council and tonight we're bringing back this item for city council's review and adoption for the current twenty ten, twenty eleven year. When we started the process, we were looking at a budget gap of one point nine million dollars, looking at revenues about thirty point three million dollars and expenditures about thirty two point two million dollars, therefore leaving that gap about one point nine million dollars. In looking at the options in closing the gap, we looked at both revenues and expenditures and on the revenue side, uh, we are looking at nine hundred thousand dollars in additional revenues from limited time revenues, that is, and these come from excess ERAF and also the RDA loan repayments of four hundred thousand dollars. On the expenditure side, uh, there are predominantly staff eliminations and reorganizations within the city and that amounted to an aggregate of eight hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. So, looking at the revised revenues, uh, we're looking at thirty one point three eight million dollars and the revised expenditures of thirty one point three eight two million dollars, therefore coming up with a balanced budget for the general fund for this twenty ten, twenty eleven year. This slide gives a little bit of a historical perspective in terms of comparisons where we were and just this past year and, uh, looking at the adopted budget, as you can tell, we had a thirty point eight million dollar operating revenue adopted budget for the past year and that was revised due to economic conditions, revised downwards down to thirty point three million dollars. And as you can tell, looking at the comparison for the proposed budget, a little bit of a slight increase, seeing a little bit of improvement in the economy, but obviously very, very modest and we're still looking at a very fragile economy. And in looking at non-operating revenues, again, in closing the budget gap, nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, coming from, uh, the limited time revenues, uh, for the upcoming year, for the current year, actually. Looking at the operating expenditures, as you can tell, it's relatively flat. Uh, again, the twenty ten, eleven includes reductions of staff and the reorganization of various departments. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager to talk about the specifics in terms of the staff eliminations and the reorganization.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the, as the council is aware, the process to develop this budget actually began significantly before June first and June second, as the finance director indicated, that was the time at which the council conducted your initial detailed review of the budget itself. But the identification of the revenue to expenditure shortfall, particularly related to the decline, continuing decline in normal revenues that fund city operations, was first identified back in February as part of our mid-year budget review. At that time, we identified the shortfall and initiated actions to eliminate that gap and to produce a balanced budget. The city council has conducted a great deal of discussion regarding the use of limited term revenues and we've also conducted a great deal of time, uh, time and discussion devoted to evaluation of changes in our organization. I will note again, as I said before, that although we've been at this for a number of years and in total have reduced approximately fifteen percent of our total general fund workforce over the past several years, in fact, the effort does not become any easier. What you see before you tonight in the way of additional staff reductions builds on reductions which have occurred in previous years and over the past approximate seven and a half years that we have continued to experience declines in revenues and budget shortfalls, as I said, we've reduced a significant proportion of our general fund workforce and have made changes to the way that we do business and the amount of service that we provide to our residents. I like to think, and I think we've done a good job, that many, if not most, of the changes we have already made, they've been intended to be relatively seamless as it relates to the perspective of the public. In other words, we've worked very hard to avoid impacts to critical programs and services that result in diminishment of the quality of life in the community or the direct services that residents specifically need. I believe that this additional reduction continues, but probably begins in a more deliberate way, changes to our services that will be more readily visible to members of our community. We have reduced with this budget an additional eight point six positions in the city's general fund service. Those are listed on the slide in front of you. They, they move across all departments in our organization and they represent changes not only to how we deliver services, as I mentioned before, but some tangible eliminations in some of the services that we provide. In particular, and I'm not going to go through all of the service, anticipated service impacts that are listed in this brief summary or that we have previously discussed with the city council, but just will mention a few of those. We anticipate eliminating the police response to non-injury traffic accidents, a level of service that we have historically provided, in addition perhaps to the more intangible increase in response time in certain response situations, particularly to non-emergency police calls. We anticipate a reduction in the amount of time and attention that can be devoted to preventative public safety, both police and fire activities and in particular preventative activities through our fire department and our, our prevention bureau. We anticipate in that area, a delay in the turnaround time for plan checks and a reduction and change in the way that we interact with the community and, and development proposals. We anticipate with a significant twenty percent reduction to our landscape maintenance workforce in our parks division, that is two out of our ten landscape and parks maintenance work staff, worker staff. We anticipate a significant reduction in the time and attention that our staff will be able to provide, both to park maintenance, although that will continue to be a priority, but also to public open space landscaped areas in the, in the public rights of way and in particular potentially to our median islands. We anticipate transferring the maintenance, or rather the lining of ball fields to youth sports organization user groups as opposed to being able to provide those ourselves. And with the reduction in our custodial staff, again, a twenty percent reduction or one out of our five custodians has, that position has been eliminated. We will experience a decrease in the frequency, the amount and the level of service that's provided to routine maintenance of, of our facilities. In particular, we anticipate at our library with a substantial reduction in the part-time hours that are allocated to operating the library and supporting our relatively limited full-time staff, we anticipate needing to close the library additional hours, an additional eight hours per week, which will result in the library being closed, not just during the morning hours on Fridays, as has been the case over the past year, but for the entire day on Friday. So, again, I'm just attempting to highlight primarily for, you know, members of the public who may not have followed this process in detail, some of the changes and the reductions that, that we anticipate residents will see. As we move through the implementation of these budget reductions, you can expect that there may be additional changes that need to be made and as we are continuing to experience of revenue constraints to fund normal operating requirements, necessary services to the public, we do anticipate that the, the coming year will require careful vigorous maintenance of oversight to the budget as well as the regular quarterly reporting to the city council and we would anticipate making adjustments as necessary to assure that the budget that we are delivering over the course of the next twelve months continues to meet the council's priority direction for the maintenance of a balanced budget. That, I asked Mr. Suen to finish the presentation and then this is a public hearing item, as the mayor indicated, the public hearing remains open and this is the opportunity for any additional discussion, questions, comments by the city council before we produce your final budget.
Any questions at all so far?
So, in continuation, other significant funds in the city include our four enterprise funds, that is the water fund, the wastewater fund, stormwater and the cable television fund, as you can tell, each one of these funds do have a balanced budget and incorporates year rate programs for the, the primary, the three primary funds or the two primary funds, that being the water and the wastewater fund. The other funds that are of significance are, the other funds that are within the city include internal service funds and then finally, within the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency, we have an operating fund, a low and moderate income housing fund that also has budgets and for the operating fund, that includes a CRAF takeaway, that's year number two, expected to be about four hundred and ten thousand dollars. Just as a reminder, last year, we paid almost one point, almost two million dollars in CRAF takeaway that the state imposed on us as part of their budget process, their budget balancing process, so year two is smaller, but obviously still a significant number for our redevelopment agency. And then finally, the low and moderate income housing fund is really the twenty percent set aside that's required under redevelopment law. So, with that, this is a public hearing, as indicated, so the recommendation for the city council is to approve the recommended twenty ten, eleven budget for the city as well as the twenty ten, eleven budget for the redevelopment agency and then filing, finally, making the determination that the planning administrative expenses funded by the low and mod income fund are necessary for the production improvement and preservation of affordable housing for low and moderate income households. With that, I'll take any questions from the city council?
Any questions at this time?
Not a question, but, Ed, could you just briefly explain that the, on those enterprise funds, that there is in excess of seven million dollars in additional revenue and just say where that additional revenue is going towards?
Yes, those, those excess, if I may, in terms of revenues over expenditures are really needed to fund capital improvements and the rates that were developed was based on a study that looks at over a ten-year time horizon, what the costs are needed in terms of set aside to fund those improvements are really important and fundamental for the system.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public like to speak on the budget issues? If I close the public hearing, you will be precluded from saying anything else, so.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any comments, action?
Through the chair?
Irene?
Thank you. I have a couple of things I'd like us to consider. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for all their hard work on this. It's not easy taking a little bit that we have, taking some more away from it and still doing all the services that people expect from us, so I compliment you on how you've done what you've done and all the different choices we have before us. You've made it very clear what they are, so, thank you for that. I'd like us to consider two items. One, we had in the past a leadership program that has been eliminated. It was a ten thousand dollar budget item. I'd like to suggest that we include some amount of that back into the budget, perhaps up to five thousand dollars. One of the reasons is we have no backup for anybody. We have no assistant city manager, where many cities of our size have at least one, if not two. We have no assistant anybody, per se, and the leadership program that was developed in the past gave opportunity for mid-management to kind of exercise their leadership abilities and learn what it would be to take on the department head responsibilities or different things like that. So I think it's crucial for the city and the city organization to continue some kind of program. I don't think it has to be what was in the past, but I would like us to consider adding that to our budget. The other thing I'd like us to really consider is adding some money back into the library fund. They are taking seventy thousand dollars out. I'd like us to consider adding twenty two thousand dollars back. That would enable some flexibility with more part-time people. It would allow opening on Friday where now it is closed. And think about the library. When your own income is reduced or eliminated, it means you don't go to the movies, you don't go to Barnes and Nobles and buy books, you don't do a lot of those things and in, from two thousand and five till now, the library, the circulation has increased forty seven percent. That means people go to the library and take out forty seven percent more things, books, CDs, movies, all those things. Also, in that same time period, we've increased patronage by a hundred people a day. So from eight hundred people five years ago to nine hundred people a day use our library. It's not any bigger. We don't have, you know, many new things, but they can't go anywhere else and that's kind of the last line of, for entertainment, for research, for children's books and different programs like that. So I'd like us to consider adding back twenty two thousand dollars for the library. So those are my two comments.
Okay, anyone else? Here you go.
Through the chair. And I appreciate what council, councilwoman said, but I'm trying to understand if, if we increase twenty seven thousand, where are we going to decrease twenty seven thousand? That would be my first question to staff.
Well, they haven't heard my proposal, so I don't think they have answered to that. I, I would suggest we just take twenty seven thousand dollars out of reserve. We certainly have it.
Well, my only concern is, A, we're going to reserves again, two, we're going to be laying somebody off and that is a concern and obviously we can even argue the enterprise fund at cable, we shouldn't furlough them, we should keep them open because they're providing a service and we're trying to now recruit folks to come and join our, our organization within San Bruno Cable and the family, shall we say, and yet we're furloughing them. So in essence, they're a customer service provider and so six days a year, they're going to be closed. I'm also concerned if all the bargaining units do not accept what we are hoping for, then obviously we're going to be back to the drawing board here, I believe, and staff, please correct me. And if that's the case, then what do we do? Are we going to go back into reserves? So, to me, this opens up some questions of concerns that I have because I, even if we did do the twenty seven thousand out of reserve, what happens if? What happens if the economy still doesn't flourish as we hope? What happens if the bargaining units don't all concur to the furlows or other items that we're asking? So, that's another one of my concerns.
Ken?
I, I agree. I really, I really appreciate, you know, the passion that Councilwoman O'Connell has and I, and I agree with those, with those assessments. But yes, we're dealing with other people's lives now also and I believe we're, we are totally laying off about four, four individuals. We're, we're adjusting employment of, of others and, and yeah, there are still some unanswered questions, so we meet every meeting just to, just to talk about these negotiations. So, I think those things are going to be in the back of our mind, you know, and we've been dealing with this budget on a monthly basis, you know, for the last eight years. And so I think we'll, we'll deal with that and if things start picking up, then I'm sure one of us, including Mrs. O'Connell, will, will say, let's, let's, let's look at the library and, you know, let's increase the hours and we'll, I'll be right there with you, so. I think we, we need to move forward here with this budget and, and then hope for the best.
Michael?
One, one question to staff. If, after we've done, we're done going through this and we approved the budget and we did have an opportunity at some point to maybe find another source of revenue, would we be able then to come back and maybe amend some of these lines? I think that's still an option for us, isn't it?
It is. We report to the city council the budget status, including projections through the year end at every, at the end of every three-month period, at the end of every quarter. As I said, that includes projections of where revenues will be by year end, where expenditures will likely be by year end. You have the opportunity at any time to amend the budget, including at those times when you have the opportunity to see what the trends are and, and if, if it were the case that revenues were trending ahead of projections or if there were some reason to anticipate that certain expenditures might not need to be, budgeted expenditures might not be needed in the light of new information in the, at some point down the road here, you would have the ability to make changes at any time.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, the only other, one thing I was going to start off with was that I think the public needs to understand too, we're using five hundred thousand of ERAF, we're using four hundred thousand of redevelopment agency loan equipment, but would have gone back into the equipment reserve. So in essence, there's nine hundred thousand dollars that is being used as one time, we'll call it again, so that we can balance this budget, so we don't decimate the services more and we don't have to reduce services as well as lay off individuals on our city payroll. So in essence, we still are taking, because these things could be replenished, maybe go infrastructure and our facility maintenance and other things that are also lacking and we have not really a great plan for the future as far as some of our current buildings and that there are fifty years plus as a library, the pool, the fire station, all those things need attention. So, I think the community needs to understand too, I think had we really lived within our means, as I will call it, which means we don't touch any of these monies, it would decimate, I believe, the services that we currently and what the community expect. And I think we need to understand, we're not out of the tough waters yet and it is still going to be a tough year and a tough two-ten, two-eleven. So, when the services are noticed or the calls aren't responded to in a timely fashion, I don't mean emergency services, the public needs to understand what's happening. It's happening everywhere and in their homes and in their own personal lives, but this is probably the first time the community will start to feel some of the pinch and some of the reductions.
Well, there's good points made on both sides. I, I'm not really in favor of getting into reserves. We, you know, thank God we have some reserves, some cities don't. The leadership program, I mean, point well taken, I, I think the, that's something we can look at if in fact there's a way in the, in the not too distant future to put five thousand in. I do agree with Irene on the library. Believe it or not, not everybody has a computer. Believe it or not, not everybody can go to, you know, a place and rent a movie where they can go to the library. Believe it or not, you know, a lot of people don't have the things that, the day-to-day things that a lot of us take for granted. Like Park and Rec, you know, if you can't go to a Giants game because the budget's really tight or whatever, you can go to the park. And so, it, like I said, if you, if you don't have a computer at home, you can go to the library and to cut that down, even the smallest amount, given the fact that the use of the library has increased so dramatically, and that's a sign of the times too. I'm in favor of finding twenty two thousand dollars someplace and if in fact it has to come for reserves, I'm for that. And if in fact in the next five, six months, two months, eight months, we can find a little increase someplace to put back in reserves, I'd be for that. But it's the little things that people appreciate the most. When times get tough, they use things like the library and the park. Those are, those are things, you know, we have to think about budgets, we have to talk about bargaining units. You know, the bargaining in this city is just like any, anyplace else, it's give and take. We sit at the table and we work together, but we have an opportunity here to say yes or no. And so, I, I am for funding twenty two thousand dollars more from, into the library to do as what Irene said, we can keep it open a little bit longer because that's one of the things that people, we have to take care of this whole city, but we have to take care of the, of the people that really need that service. So, that's my little spiel.
Ken?
Can you explain what, rate or rate with twenty two thousand dollars represents?
I'm sorry, say it again?
What does the twenty two thousand dollars represent?
Oh, it would give staff flexibility to have the part-time people, to salary some of the part-time people, that would keep the library open on Fridays now, that it, if we pass the current budget, the library would have to close on Friday. This would keep the library open on Fridays, it would keep the program such as Storytime, the summer reading program, the school visits would remain at their current service level and we would continue to have the book club. So as the mayor said, the, the people who, it's a hundred more people a day, nine hundred people use that library and many of them use it for the internet access on the computers as well as the other services that we have, so it's not, it's not cutting off somebody because they want to get the latest bestseller, it's cutting off people's access to job searches, their email, all those kinds of things as well.
And so how does that compare with the seventy thousand dollar cut that we're, we're looking at in the budget?
The seventy thousand dollar cut that's proposed almost entirely eliminates, because it's, it's compounding cuts that have been made in previous years to the part-time hours. It makes a substantial reduction to, as Councilmember O'Connell indicated, the, the flexibility and capacity of staff to cover operational requirements. Twenty two thousand dollars would allow us to, if it is the council's priority preference, to maintain the operating hours, it's, it still would require reconfiguring the way that we staff the library, in other words, who's, what components are being staffed and how many people are, are present, there would still be a substantial change, obviously. But that, a little bit of flexibility would allow us to maintain operating hours if that was the service that was the priority expressed by the council, which I'm hearing. We, I, I'm not remembering the precise amount of part-time hours that are currently proposed to be maintained in the budget, but it's a very, I'm looking for it right now, it's a very small amount compared to what's historically has been available. We're, we're cutting in half, essentially, it's a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars is regular part-time budget in the library right now, we cut it in half. That's, that's a pretty dramatic change to the staffing profile, the part-time hourly staff is a substant, is a very significant component of the, of the way that the library is staffed.
But with the addition back end of twenty two thousand, we'd be able to do some of the things that Councilwoman O'Connell mentioned?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. That is correct. Just a comment on the council's previous conversation about where would the money come from, we would be happy if it is council's direction in acting on the budget tonight to come back to you at the next meeting with a specific proposal about how that could be managed, and if possible, if there's another reduction we could identify that would take the place of that. It's, this is a very tight budget. I wouldn't want to promise you that or make a snap judgment tonight about exactly what that would mean, although you can certainly reduce... I'm sorry, I'll tell you that in a minute, just a second.
Is that the score of the All-Star game?
No, actually, what it is, is he's reminding me that the hours on other days of the week, Monday through Thursday, would still be reduced, and I did not mention this before, currently those hours, Monday through Thursday, are 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And the add-back of a limited amount of part-time hours would not fully restore those hours. The hours that we're anticipating Monday through Thursday would still be cut to 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I, I think that that is still within the parameters of the type of access, though, that the council is talking about. The idea of being not available on an entire day is a, is a kind of a different thing than being available on fewer hours during the day in the evening. Again, we, we could, we can come back to you, you can approve the budget with the, with the, either with an increase in the allocation, or direct us to come back to you with a specific additional compensating decrease somewhere else.
My only question is that if we approve this budget as it is tonight, will the library be closed on Friday?
On this coming Friday?
Yes.
That's, that's an interesting question. It would not necessarily, the answer is no. We have not noticed the public, and my specific direction to staff is, you understand that you have a budget that reduces your part-time hours by $70,000. So you will make it work, you will provide notice to the public before you close the hours on Friday or any other time. And so the operations of the library are being managed with, within the parameters of that direction.
I'm just like to say, I'm prepared to approve this budget with that, provided that we, we will come back, and I'm in favor of looking into increasing or altering the revenue of the, to preserve the library hours.
My position would be that you can bring it back, but I want to see how it's going to get paid for, not out of reserves. Again, it's a tight budget, everyone's feeling it, we're asking for sacrifices, we're laying off people, and I think I can go almost to every department and say why we need more somewhere, and yes, the library has a huge service level that it provides, and the councilwoman's not exaggerating by her, the stats and the numbers of people that do utilize that service. Even though, you know, thank God, the, the kids from Parkside were here because they were making this budget a little more pleasant to deal with this evening because of their nice stories. But I'm prepared at this moment to approve the budget, and we can bring back that item, this is my thought, to review, but I'm not prepared to increase it tonight.
Okay, any action?
Want to say something?
First of all, do we, it's, it's not a resolution, we're just approving?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I wouldn't want to limit, limit staff from saying, don't you use reserves at all? Maybe there's 5,000 here and 5,000 there and 5,000 from reserves, so I'd like to say to them, bring us something back. Yeah, and it sounds like the council is willing to look at increasing the library's amount by $22,000. So with that caveat, I move to approve all the recommendations that are on the board.
Introduce resolution.
Do you need, do you need separate?
There's a motion. Do we need those separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Three separate resolutions.
I'll move to approve the city manager's recommendation with the caveat that I just mentioned. Is there a second?
It's all resolutions.
Just on that particular recommendation or on the resolution? There's a resolution, there are three resolutions for the council.
Okay, they're not, they're not listed separately in the agenda, so...
Thirty-six.
Okay. I'll introduce the resolution for, I have mine, for approving the city manager's recommendation with the caveat that they look into the $22,000 increase for the library.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. We have an action on item B, the San Bruno redevelopment agency budget.
Okay, I'll introduce the resolution to approve the city manager's recommendation for the San Bruno redevelopment agency budget.
Agency member O'Connell?
Aye.
Agency member Ibera?
Aye.
Agency member Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina?
Aye.
Chair Ruane?
Aye. And item C, we need a motion to determine that the planning administration expenses funded for 2011 regarding low and moderate income housing fund are necessary?
I think it's also a resolution.
Is it a resolution? Okay. Who would like to introduce?
I'll introduce, I guess it's falling to me tonight. I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Councilmember Salazar, Vice Chair Medina?
Aye again.
I got two votes this time.
Aye. All right.